The Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. In the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, origin and just.
With the records show that Mike Sprinkle is not here today, he is attending a funeral. We have the minute meetings in our packet. Everyone have a chance to review those? Are there any changes? The only thing that I would note is my name is, my last name is misspelled under present. That was the only thing that I saw.
Missed that.
Yeah, U N O, yeah.
Look for a motion to approve.
So move.
Matt made the motion, second by Tony, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have the CF1s were in our packets for the abatements, for those tax abatements on the schedule. We have them for Graber Post, One Way Technologies, Client, GPC, JBR Rentals, Maysville Properties, Melrose Westgate Holdings, Westgate One, and Davis Martin RTC. Did everyone have a chance to review those? Are there any questions concerning any of the individual ones that were in the packet?
I thought overall they look great. I do have one question on the, on the RTC.
Okay.
They have community benefit of $8.5 million and there's really no supporting document on that. So I would request that the Otters Office reach out to them and get some information back on how that 8.5 is a total broadband for the whole county. Cause there's a lot of people in the broadband business.
Right.
And I wanted, I truly want to know just RTC's impact and then I want to know how they got the 8.5 million.
Can you reach out for us, please? Thank you. Any other comments?
I just, uh, comment, I don't know if you know, on the, uh, on the Berry Global slash Client, are they still Berry Global? I thought, there's a sign out front on the, on their entry now that says they're Amcor. So, I don't know. The, uh, that sign's changed a couple of times now in the last few years. But, uh, yeah, the last time I drove by there, they've got it covered and it's got Amcor on it. So.
Yeah, I think that merger went through like April, May or something like that.
I don't know if that just needs to be updated to reflect that.
Yeah, these did come in before that merger was completed.
Okay, okay.
So the next one we see may have the corrected information on it.
Just a general question, or, and it's for the, for Jen, is there any, any of our current abatements out there that did not get any document?
Not that I'm aware of.
Any other comments or questions?
We'll do those all separately.
Right? Yes.
Yeah, cause I have to.
Okay, first one up, Graber Post Buildings. I look for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Tom made the motion.
Second.
Second by Mike Myers.
I abstained.
And Matt abstained, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. One Way Technologies, look for a motion.
Go move.
Tony made the motion. Darren seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Client LLC, we have two of those. Look for a motion.
So move.
Matt made the motion, second by Tom, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have Grain Processing Corporation, look for a motion. Okay, Darren made the motion. Tony seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. JBR Rentals, look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Tom.
Second.
Second by Matt, all in favor. Oh.
Abstaining.
Tony is abstaining, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Maysville Properties LLC, look for a motion.
Move.
Matt made the motion. Darren seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Tony abstained. Motion carries. Melrose Westgate Holdings, look for a motion.
So move.
Tony made the motion. Tom seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Westgate One LLC, look for the motion.
So move.
Matt made the motion.
Second.
Tony seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Davis Martin Rule Cooperative RTC, look for the motion.
Move.
Tom made the motion. Darren seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Nathan Rim from Westgate, or Wes Boggs. Sorry, I'm still on the last one.
Good morning. Bear with me here, I got a few topics and some stuff to pass out. So we can start with the golf course. Um, as some of you may know, the golf course fairways have died. We had Bermuda grass spring. Uh, it did not last over the winter. So that was not done by the park, um, Stalls Restaurant. Golf course are leased out from Boggs. Um, those individuals operate the golf course. Um, so they paid for the springing and all that, and then it didn't work out. They don't have insurance. They're similar to like crop insurance. Um, he's going to look into that, but there was over $30,000 worth of damage. So they contacted me, see if we could help. The park is, got its own projects going on. We've got a number of dilapidated buildings, things like that, we're fixing up now, so we didn't really have a lot of investment money to give to them. So they are footing the bill. Uh, I did help them, however, write a grant. Um, so I said, hey, if you find me a grant that I'm not aware of, I will apply for it. Um, hopefully that'll help. So we did that through being for others, which is a memorial hospital. So in lieu of getting that, uh, we'll see in August, but they went ahead and wrote a check. We can't really wait. The topsoil would have eroded, completely destroyed the golf course, so the springing's already been done. Uh, the golf course wrote us a check and then I contacted State Board of Accounts, make sure this was okay. That we use our, um, tax ID number to go ahead and purchase that material and service. And then it went ahead and got applied. That way they don't have to pay tax. This is something that's staying on park property. So it was okay to do that, but I made sure with State Board of Accounts. If you guys see here, I've got, uh, do you have the additional appropriation sheets? I've got those, I can pass out to you. So it ended up being a little bit cheaper. Um, so that was the original additional appropriation. However, the actual job ended up being 33,375 instead of the quota 37, so.
Those additionals have not made, met the cutoff, so that's not the additional that's on here today. That's on the next meeting. So today's is just for your building repair of the 15,000 due to the timings of everything.
Okay.
And.
That's going to be an overdue invoice, I would say.
Because of the timing, we could not get it advertised and get it done correct into that timeframe for this meeting.
Okay.
We'll pass it out. Pass it out, that way we've got it.
Yeah, I've got checks, uh, showing the check cleared. Um, and then I've got a, a document showing the agreement between us and the golf course. And the State Board of Accounts, if you guys want to see the approval from them, I have that. Where you'd like to see.
Right, and I believe we have it set up for the next meeting due to the timing for the advertisement for additional appropriations and us getting stuff to the state. So for the timing, those, that additional will be on the next one. And the, Nathan and I need to have a meeting in regards to that and the placement of that money as well. Because grant funds have to go in grant fund accounts and not general operations.
Would you consider that a grant, Jen? If the golf course just paid us a check and we cleared that check and that check is routed?
Whatever that is, it has to either go in that donation fund or something. It's not within your general operation expense fund. So we have to either create or put it in a fund of what it is designated for to make sure it stays within the parameters. And that money can only be spent on certain things and by putting it in its own fund is how we're directed by the state in doing that. So we have to get that done as well.
So we're over a month to pay that invoice, basically.
So we're gonna have to, we gotta get that figured out. It's part of, yeah, we gotta have a meeting.
Okay, alright.
Can we have?
Yes.
Can there be a special meeting or something so that the invoice is not late or?
Need to figure that out.
Okay.
And you didn't have to wait a month.
And forgive me, Jen, I didn't fully understand. Are we in the same boat with the building repairs for the?
Repairs is what's on here for today.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I understood it. It was, you were kind of giving an update of the golf course and all the stuff today, but the actual additional can't be done till the next meeting. But yes, the, uh, building repair of the 15,000 is what's actually put on for the additional appropriation. It did make it for the timing of everything.
Okay, excellent. Um, so we got, received 10,000 from Martin County Community Foundation and 5,000 from Davis County Tourism. So I do have those additional appropriations, if you guys would like to see those. But I would like to pass out some pictures of the beach house. Pretty clear to see, uh, the state of dilapidation that it was in. I've got a set of pictures there and then beautiful set of pictures here, but it's almost completed. You guys can take a look at those. That building's been leaking for about 25 years, so really excited to get a new roof on that. Uh, showers are open. We had literally thousands of people swimming over Fourth of July weekend, which was excellent. And not only was the beach house dilapidated in the past, but the lake wasn't good. Uh, right now we're at 43,000 cell counts. Um, last year we were at over 100. The year before that it was hundreds of thousands. So very, uh, very drastic improvement in lake health this year. So pretty excited to see that, especially with the rain. So anyway, we're just, uh, looking at getting those grant funds appropriated into the correct accounts.
Do you just need to approve those being accepted, the grant funds or those donations being accepted and then the check being written? Nothing today?
Nathan, I know you guys have a program in place, but would you mind elaborating a little bit on the bacteria counts and that kind of stuff that you've talked? What, what, um, what have you put in place to see that kind of reduction?
Yeah, actually, we're doing a very innovative treatment. Um, it's out of a company in Northern Indiana called Enzyme Solutions. Uh, to my knowledge, no one's ever done this on a lake of this scale. Uh, it's in the Indiana Lake Conference up in Noblesville and no one is doing this. They're all using traditional algicide, uh, which typically hasn't worked in our lake. So we were passed before I was there, investing like 40 grand into aquatic controls algicide and we were still getting lake closures and toxin production and things like that. So, um, I heard about this company through, actually an Amish friend of mine. Um, it was formulated for hog waste pits. So it eats phosphorus, nitrogen and potassium, kind of helps with that nutrient ratio, settles out the solids. And then it allows the farmers to spread it easier on their fields. They figured out it worked well in ponds and in concept, unfortunately, our lake is kind of a large, you know, sediment trap for a lot of the farms upstream. It's a very similar kind of pollution. It's not really chemical pollution. It's like nutrients from farms and so forth. Um, so we're introducing like 30,000 gallons of this this year. So it's like a truckload a month. I worked out a really good deal with this company because it's great advertisement for them. We tried it on a small scale in one of the basins last year and it was almost free. And then I wrote an 80-page study for them showing that it worked amazingly well. And now they're wanting to do it at large scale and then hopefully scale out nationwide. Despite the rain, it's working pretty good.
Oh, yeah.
I think without the rain, it would be working very well. Little bit more labor intensive for us. They're in like 250 gallon totes. We sprayed in with a fire hose and just kind of go around. And we're treating the main drag of the lake. And I worked a deal with the landowners that they're purchasing smaller quantities and then they can pour that in their docks. Normally, an algicide would have an MSDS sheet. You can't really just apply it as a normal person without permits. This you can. So it's kind of nice that we can, you know, have the landowners help plus, you know, get that community engagement and then the park can kind of do the main drag of the lake. Um, and then I do testing with aquatic control, usually every week, uh, sometimes every other. It's kind of expensive. So I send those out to the lab and then they count the actual cells and variety that we have. I can share those with you guys if you'd like. Yeah, cell counts are drastically lowered.
Yeah, fantastic.
Yep, going along. So it looks like maybe the other thing that Marilyn and I discussed with the entertainment expenses, we might be going to do a little snag here. You know, we've got some bands booked and so forth. We have taken in, uh, let's see, $9,250 in sponsors. Martin County Tourism gave us $5,000, Crane Credit Union 500, US Gypsum 500, Matrix 2,000, Kern's Insurance 150, Lockmillers 500, M and M 100, Old National 500 total. So can you get that applied into our entertainment budget so we don't run over our upcoming events? Um, that, Jen, also is not. Yeah, yeah. Okay, that would be the fourth topic. Um, so the last, I guess it's been multiple meetings now. The Park Board approved to kind of move our wage, uh, both upper and lower. During COVID and after, you know, we were kind of competitive in town, like McDonald's, the pool and all that, we're paying 11, 12. Um, so our low was 1150. I've now moved that to nine. Um, we still primarily hire like college age kids to do the gatehouse and stuff, given the late hours and early mornings. You know, kind of after the high school kids go back to school, we still are really busy. So usually we pay a little bit more than that, but I think, you know, it's, uh, important to be able to, you know, give the part-time, you know, high school kids, you know, an appropriate wage for maybe their first job or something like that. So we were interested in lowering that to nine and then moving the upper wage up 25. A couple of reasons for that. We're just kind of needing some higher skill work sometimes, so especially like Friday, Saturday. We've got thousands and thousands of people in the park and a lot of electrical problems. Um, I've got people working on the beach house now. We replumbed, did all the electric in-house. There's constantly issues with breakers and things in the campsites. Having someone that's not an electrician or decently high skilled to fix those electric breakers. It's, uh, a very high likelihood that they could injure themselves, camper, burn up a camp or something like that. In addition to that, we're interested in having someone helping out with grants too. So, um, I did bring some information on just kind of the recent projects. I've been interviewing a little bit and just happen to have these. But the last page kind of shows the grants that I've applied for and we're just busy. I think it would be really helpful to have somebody help focus on those kind of things. You know, we've taken in quite a bit of grants. I think that's the most efficient way that I can spend my time as far as, you know, dollar per hour ever. There's, you know, a lot going on at the park and I think we're, you know, historically have been missing tons of opportunities and grants. Um, so that would be another reason that, you know, we're interested enough in that wage. Got some great people identified. Um, kind of the theme for this year has been saving money. We had a really bad storm last year. Um, so I've been cutting labor quite a bit, uh, where I can, you know, running less Rangers in the week, things like that. So we've got plenty of money and labor. This would just be a, um, just a normal, you know, both of these are just in the normal like labor jobs, nothing, you know, new position created full-time or anything like that. So ahead, somewhere I'll get a lot of papers. I know as of May, we had saved about $33,000 in labor over the year before. So, um, you know, we're cutting a lot with, uh, a camp host out at Glendale instead of, you know, full-time staff out there. We're running different Ranger shifts. Um, we've got one less maintenance guy, kind of be more efficient in different ways. So trying to save what we can to make up for those things. You guys have any questions regarding any of it?
So do we have to vote on cha, moving that, um, part-time wage range number or we're just, we have to actually vote on that? Okay. So are there any other questions for Nathan? Any other?
Well, he gave us a lot of stuff that we're not going to do today, I guess.
Right.
So I, I would say his information is more than adequate for me that I don't think he needs to come back if.
I can give you all this stuff then.
Oh, we're, I think we're good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say I've got a contract with the golf course, the State Board approval, I've got checks.
We'll lean on Jen to let us know how we need to proceed with that, but, yeah.
Yeah, the one that I'm most nervous about would be that golf course. It's, it's probably, I mean, they wanted paid when they did it. It's been a few weeks now and the check cleared.
Yeah.
We'll do what we can on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so then we'll need to actually have a motion as far as moving that seasonal part-time wage range from $9 for the low to 25 for the high. Look for a motion to do that. Matt made the motion. Do we have a second? Tom seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
Doing a great job up there. Next up, we have, uh, Davis Creedy Hospital. We have a couple of board appointments. Uh, we have a nomination of Tyson Wagler and Tony Dungeon.
Make a motion to approve.
Matt made a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Mike Myers. Tony is abstaining, I assume? Okay, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Thank you. We have some additional appropriations. Um, Superior Court it has requested an additional $10,000 to cover the cost. They have a couple of jury trials coming up. Um, Judge Murray was unable to be here today. Excuse me, he is at a conference in Indianapolis. Tony made a motion.
Second.
Tom second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, we have a request. I don't see Tyler here this morning, uh, from the coroner's office for an additional appropriation of 30,000 due to the increased number of autopsies and unexplained deaths in the county.
I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable voting on this.
I, I agree.
Until we hear.
From Tyler.
Yeah, we, I have.
Didn't we do this not that long ago?
Uh, there's lots of questions, so I make a motion to table until he can.
I second that.
Yeah, there's still money there.
There's still money in the account, yeah.
But yeah, we'd like to have a discussion.
Matt made a motion to table it. Tom has a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Erica is up from the airport.
Morning. Uh, just coming to you guys today, um, basically to see if I can borrow 89,645 dollars. I need to put it in the county match for grant funds that the airport has. I know I have money in there now, but that is set aside for, um, one of the grants. This other one to make this all taxi lane, access road and purchase of the hangar work. I need an additional 89 this year to pay the contractors. We will get reimbursed in August of 2026 for that same amount. So it just needs to be spent before I actually get it in hand. Not really a match, but.
Any questions for Erica?
Well, it's, it's a loan.
It's a loan, yeah, a loan. That's a great way to look at it. Yeah, yeah. Interest-free, paid back within a year.
Yeah, we're not allowed to loan. So that, that can't be that terminology.
And it comes from, um, behind.
You can appropriate and then, but yeah, the body's not allowed to loan that.
It would just come from the, the pot that I operate off of and like I said, we put it back in next, next August when it would finally come to us.
They're still thinking the end of September they'll be complete with that project?
I'm hoping. Um, September is already slammed, uh, right now, but maybe even October and I'm good if it's October too. That way I don't have construction going on when I have the event, so we'll see. That was a little bit of weird planning on my part. I kick myself in the butt for that. But, um, yeah, like I said, just need your guys' approval to, to pay them so they're not out.
Look for a motion.
So move.
Tony made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Tom, all in favor. Oh, I'm sorry. It was mine.
That's the drawback to sitting all the way at the other end of the table.
He's glasses.
Their motion was to do this, are we, to pull it out of the general fund?
Yes.
Yeah.
Very good.
And we had a second by Mike Myers, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Erica. Anything else?
There's, now that I think about it, some will probably roll over at the end of the year. Cause I don't, like I said, I know the county match, the, the, that fund has 55,000 this year. I doubt I spend all that. But I wanted to make sure I had the 89 to pay the contractor in time when they're complete. So that's why I'm here early on it and I don't have to worry about not having the funds to cover them, so.
Yeah, and we can track that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, don't be alarmed if you see some at the end of the year get rolled over. Well, why did she need that? It's just.
Okay.
Cover my basis.
Okay.
Making sure the math maths.
We appreciate the forethought.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for all you're doing out there as well. Mr. Ellison, Sheriff Ellison, you're up next.
How are you this morning? Uh, this is on a, uh, last year's vehicle purchases. You know, we do the Kelly Blue Book in May. We turn in our budget in June. By the time we're ready to trade, the car differences are different. 5,691 dollars and 25 cents short. So instead of coming back and asking you for money out of County General, I got creative and said that we use our cars to check on sex offenders, so therefore I can use the sex offender fund money to make that gap up. And, uh, that's what we did and the State Board of Accounts said you all got to approve that. So I did not do that, but, so.
Was, was it on one vehicle or more, multiple vehicles?
It was the total package.
Okay, so how many vehicles was in that roughly?
How many did we get last year? Four?
Okay.
Yeah, we had four.
1,500 bucks a vehicle or whatever you're saying was roughly?
Roughly, yeah. I mean, some, you know, some are 10, some are 18 and then that's what I go by in June. By the time we actually did the deals, they give me the prices for them, they're a lot different four months down the road.
Yeah, I understand.
They never go up. I just thought that would be a, the money was sitting there and I thought that'd be a better way than hitting County General. That, that sex offender fund is paid by a monthly sex offender fee. And then, uh, we also kind of, I also forgot that, uh, we're supposed to send the state 10% of that. And, uh, we've got that covered as well.
Okay.
They questioned why I bought a camera and other things out of it, but the cars, what they really got a lot about. But that is a big deal.
Any other questions?
I made the motion to approve.
Tom made the motion. Darren second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next we have, uh, there was a laptop for the CASA. And there is an email attached from Dale on the Dale, Dale Latitude Laptop. Do we have any questions on that?
The only question I have is Dale put on there, I don't know, six, what is it, 1,600 bucks and the request is for 2,000?
Yeah. And I asked about that as well and I don't see Dale here this morning because I was going to ask him. He had this quote in June, so I don't know if pricing went up or if there was additional software. I'm not sure what that.
I mean, it's, it's not a big dollar amount. It was just.
It was different.
It didn't match.
Yeah.
Knowing how Dale operates, I'm going to keep motion.
Okay. Tony made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Matt, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The opioid funds. We have a request. This was for $54,000 to come out of the Restricted Opioid Settlement Fund. This was approved by the JRAC Board on May the 21st and it is appropriated for the Rise Peer Recovery Davis County. The IREX program. Do you want to speak to that show be at all or no? Okay. Any questions? It's a great program. If no questions, I would ask for a motion.
So move.
Matt made the motion to approve. Do we have a second? Tony made the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We also have up an appropriation from the coroner's office. It's $900 and this was, uh, Community Foundation. Gave the coroner's office a grant to allow them to buy some equipment and this is just moving that money. And the request is to spend it on the equipment. I'm not sure what equipment. I'm not sure what the grant said.
Tax payer's money.
Moving it to that fund.
So I'm sure the grant application, uh, was specific on that, but I don't have a copy of that.
Move to approve.
Tom made a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Mike Myers second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And then we have the appropriation for the fifteen thousand, um, on Wes Boggs, on that building repair that Nathan spoke of earlier. So we'd look for a motion to approve that as well. Matt made the motion, second by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
He carries. We have information in our packet, we have the Visitors Bureau minutes, um, meeting minutes and also from DCH, their Finance Committee meeting minutes. We have anything from the audience today?
Marilyn, one thing, since we've now reappointed our, our hospital board member, Tony, you might want to mention, I think there's a meet and greet coming up for the new CEO in a couple weeks, isn't there? He had one with the employees last week, but yeah, I don't have that in front of me.
I think it's next week, isn't it?
And, uh, he's a very qualified and he will do an excellent job. I've heard good things about him. Justin Harris, yeah. Long, timely process of different people and different things and, yeah, excited that he is in that position.
Anything else from the council? If not, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
The motion, second, all in favor? Meeting is adjourned.